I call a planning commission meeting for May 23, 2024 to order. We'll begin with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Rosetti?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Excused.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, May 2, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings, and we'll follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so. Some people may just have questions, and we'll try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow for the removal of soil and other earth substances at 6300 Tin Man. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
I'm Troy Plaster. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you got to stay into the mic, though.
Okay.
Before we get started, all night, speak into the mic, okay? Thank you.
I'm Troy Plaster, project manager with DeNora Tech. So we were recently selected by the DOE, Department of Energy, for government funding for a project that could potentially require a large expansion to our Mennor facility. So along with that funding is also a strict timeline of project completion. So while we're still working towards final approval on that project, we'd like to start by removing the mounds on the Mennor property. That'll help us take advantage of the summer weather, but also make sure we don't jeopardize that final project timeline. So we're working with Jeff Bogart as our architect and owners' representative, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Troy. I'm Jeffrey Bogart, project architect and owners' representative for DeNora. Incidentally, I was also here in the beginning when we started this project and have some history, especially with the soils removal that we're trying to accomplish now. Back when this project started, as you may all be aware of, we had no choice in the mounds that were left on the site. It was a crushed site from a developer that was taking the spoils from Route 2, and I don't know what else, but it's on the site. We had no choice but to kind of have it on the site because it was well over our budget to try and remove it at that time. DeNora has done well. We've been back here. We've done an addition or two to the building. We're finishing up our third addition now. And as Troy has said, we need to remove this soil. It's not a return on any kind of investment for us, but we have to pay for having this soil removed from our site. There are essentially three mounds, somewhere between 90,000 and 100,000 cubic yards of soil. In doing so, we have contacted members of your city, the Parks and Recreation, the assistant manager, the adjacent city of Painesville, and their assistant city manager, to see if they couldn't make some use of all the dirt that we have to pay to remove. And we have been working with these entities to have most, if not all, of the soils delivered to their sites where they want them to be at. We think that you probably would love to have these soil piles removed. I remember being here and asked about them. There was a height limit on the one on the north. You really didn't want the one on the south. You didn't want any of them, but we were all stuck with it at that time. So I think we're all in agreement. Let's get rid of this soil. Let's put it to good use, finally. It's nothing that can really be used under a building for compaction, but it can be used in many other ways, and that's what we're attempting to do now. So we are bidding this out as an alternate bid for the Parks and Recreation, for a location at Diamond Center, and for another one in the downtown Painesville area where they have a need for a construction of an amphitheater and about 40,000 cubic yards of it. We did that because we also, we don't have the time to waste on this project. We asked the four bidders, we're still bidding, to give us their best prices for these. And so that's the prime bid. The alternate bid will be these other locations. We're still working with Mr. Swiger and some others on exactly what's needed at each dump site. We do know that if there's a requirement for your city to have a conditional use permit, that entity would be responsible for it. We can't control, nor will we know until we get the successful bidder on board of where they intend to dump the soils at. These are all experienced bidders. They understand the conditions we've explained to them. If it's Mennor, they need a CUP at the dump site, if it's more than, what, 2,000 cubic yards or 25,000 cubic yards? Whatever your requirements are. So we ask you to consider this and to pass our request.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Just to state simply, the administration is in support of the project. And our main concern, which they have addressed in their letter, is keeping the site clean, keeping the water trucks available to make sure that the right-of-ways are kept clear and free of debris. It is going to be a timely project, and they want to keep on track. So we are very confident that they'll keep the right-of-ways clear and move this along as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
The timing, what's your anticipated timeline between pile removed and start of the expansion?
Well, we don't have all our ducks in a row yet for the expansion. We know that this will take about three months to remove all the soils. And part of the reason of why we're doing what we're doing is we would come right back in with an expansion of the parking lot, because if the large expansion goes, we're going to need to clear out a lot of the area and move some parking to an adjacent lot on our land that would become permanent. I can't tell you it's going to be one particular day or another. It all depends on the Department of Energy, and if you've worked with the federal government, you know that their schedules are their schedules alone.
My only concern is, you do remove the soil piles. For some reason, what if the project doesn't proceed in a timely manner? What is the plan for maintaining final grade, revegetation? Do you have a Plan B, I guess is what I'm getting at?
Yes, we do. We've submitted that to the city, and the plan is that we've submitted an SWPPP plan. We have designed this in the soil removal to maintain a slight 1% to 2% slope of where the piles were, so that will drain to the areas that they were draining to before, so water management is all taken care of. We have an alternate bid to hydroseed one of the locations right after the soil removal. The other two, if that's where the building is going to go, then we would wait on that and leave the SWPPP in place. If we need to, we would hydroseed it. If there's going to be a delay, if it doesn't happen, we will definitely hydroseed and take care of the vegetation.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Is there anything else?
Mr. Varga?
I'm going to pose another condition from the four that are here, that you guys be responsible for any damage done to the streets.
Yes, a hall road.
Two aprons or sidewalk, you know, concrete surfaces in the public area.
So a hall road, and I don't have enough information, but the city contacted me about a hall road bond. And Jamie Schaefer, another person at DeNora who's been spearheading almost all of this, but he's not able to be here today, he had talked to Mr. Swiger about this, and we know it's going to happen. We just need more specifics. And that's what I was trying to get from engineering, is, okay, what are the specifics? Because I can't call a bonding agent and say, hey, just give me a hall road, you know, bond. And he's going to say, well, where, and why, and how much, and what's included and not included. So as soon as we get that worked out, we'll get the bond in place.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I have one more request, and maybe this isn't the correct forum for it, but we'd like to talk to your police department about, at our cul-de-sac, we found that there are a lot of people who sit at the cul-de-sac and wait for various reasons. We're going to have a lot of traffic going in and out. We will pay for, if you will erect or allow us to erect some temporary no-parking signs around the cul-de-sac and up to the entrance to the Tin Man storage. And it might look something like this. If you want to pass this around? This is from my city, where I live, not DeNora. Beachwood. They're doing that in my neighborhood because they've got some temporary things going on. I saw it and thought it'd be a good idea if we could prevent some cars from parking where we're going to have a lot of traffic turning in that cul-de-sac. If you would agree to that, we'll work with your police department. We'll pay for the signs and the erection and removal once the piles are gone. We think it's just a safety item.
Mr. Tiedemann, do you have any?
Outside of the planning commission's purview, but they can make that request with the city manager's office, and that office can put that request in motion.
Great, thank you. We will.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve with five conditions, the fifth being the responsibility for damage to streets, aprons, and sidewalks.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you. I really never wanted those piles there in the first place. And as an architect, I'm so glad they're going to be gone.
We have a conditional use permit to allow outside dining and/or drinking at Kearney's Public House, 6316 Center Street. Is that applicant here? Come up, give us your name and address, and let's just talk about the outside dining or drinking right now, and then we'll get into the other part after the public hearings.
Okay. My name is Seamus Coyne, S-E-A-M-U-S, last name Coyne, C-O-Y-N-E. I'm representing Kearney's Public House, located 6316. We are asking for conditional use for outside dining, drinking, to be allowed, which would be a patio extension onto the current building that is located there. We are looking to have the addition that we are adding on, I believe about three-fourths of the patio will be four-season, and about 25% of it will be a two-season patio with open air. We are just looking to have an area to provide people to have lunch, dinner, to provide for, you know, we're hoping for all the events with Mennor and Lake Catholic and the funeral home located next door, and just anyone in the area.
Thank you.
Is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Please give us your name and address.
My name is Mickey Coyne, and my address, Mennor address, is 6330 Center Street. It's the Funeral Home McMahon-Coyne-Vittantonio. We're right next door to this project. And we've been here since 1980, and they're my boys, and they're friends, and Dave Bartulovic, and Mikey Watt, and the whole gang. And whatever they do, they do first class. And I think it'd be a very good extension for them to be able to do what they like to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody want to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration on the conditional use permit?
Well, the conditional use in the site plan can kind of go hand in hand. We have some things we'd like to note with regard to the parking, and we've put it on the conditional use as well as the site plan. So maybe it's just worth noting at this point in time. We just, and it's helpful to know that the adjoining property owner is here and can speak to our condition request or recommendation for shared parking agreement. We know we have a letter that we received from them showing support. But it's essential to make sure that we have the proper legal instrument in place via access easements to the connecting drive, and actual formalized agreement that gives this property and this use the right to shared parking, because it's absolutely necessary for the proposed use. And maybe the law director can speak to the importance of the agreement as well, and some of the problems maybe we've had in the past with that, with the lack of one.
Joe?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've had some worst-case scenarios in the past where a parking agreement was determined by one of the parties to no longer be equitable and something that they wouldn't honor. When that generates a parking shortage, it's bad for the business that's affected. It's bad for their employees. It's certainly bad for traffic management and the city as a whole. So what we look for in terms of compliance with the code, of course, the code does encourage shared parking, where adjacent uses can compatibly do so. But we need a permanent reciprocal easement in place that allows for that parking to exist in perpetuity, or at least, you know, for the life of the businesses that require it. Obviously, uses could be substituted in the future that would not require that much parking. But for what's on the table, then, it has to comply with our parking standards. And so the easement is necessary in order to create that permanent right of use. A license agreement or just some type of mutual understanding, those can be revoked at will. The other aspect of that that we learned sort of the hard way is that both property owners have to be, if it's a required amendment to the adjacent site development plan, that can be necessary. But at a minimum, the city has to be a party to that shared use easement so that if one or both of the parties decide, you know, they want to walk away from it, just not honor it and do nothing with it, the city can then intervene and seek its enforcement. Again, the worst-case scenario is the city having to go in there and say, well, you know, business, you've lost your shared parking, and we have to sort of direct our enforcement efforts at shutting that business down. That's a bad situation. We never want to be in that situation, but of course, where the public interest requires it, we will do what we have to. So the language is fairly standard. It's not, you know, rewriting, you know, your standard easement agreement. But I can certainly share with the applicant's representatives and the adjacent property representatives, you know, tomorrow, if not the next week, some standard language and what it would look like. Again, the city's not a party to the agreement. It just has enforcement authority for purposes of its zoning code. This way, we can go in there, and at least on a temporary basis, until the parties sort out whatever their legal differences are, at least have some enforcement authority to make sure that the shared arrangement lasts. Again, we're trying to avoid a worst-case scenario there that impacts, you know, potentially innocent employees. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members on the conditional use? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the eight conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Nothing in old business, new business. We have a building addition, site alteration of a restaurant, Kearney's Public House, at 6316 Center Street. Could you tell us a little bit about the addition and the site alteration?
So the existing building located at 6316 Center Street would stay. We would be adding on the additional patio. We would be keeping the kitchen in place from what the current Grandma Sue's was working on as far as the layout of the kitchen. The hood system is in place, would stay. We would be having more of a dining experience inside, as you could say, in the existing building. And then the outside would have a little bit more of a modern feel. If you guys want to add.
Rich Cantanzaridi, Land Design, 9025 Osborne Drive. Really, the only parking area that we're building upon is the front end, where everything else is added. But regarding all the conditions, we're in agreement with all of them. And, you know, we're going to run this a little smoother than currently shown, but very minor modifications that we'll make before we go for billing permit.
Architectural. Thank you.
Michael Tomsek. I am the architect, 921 Literary Road, Cleveland. The new addition is going to blend in and be harmonious with the existing diner-dose ones there in the effect that the two will be joined together by similar color palette materials, which include painting the old brick. There will be some new brick and stone. The primary color scheme is black with a few red accents, and there is some wood horizontal panels in the inset of the patio area. Now, in the rendering, it does not show that the chimney that you see on the patio with the logo on it, that would actually be a lighter stone color, more of a buff color. On the sample board that we submitted, I believe you have a photograph of the board.
I'll get to it. You keep going.
Okay. So once again, it's primarily a black building. It'll be a very handsome building with a new front appearance by having the flat, tall, western walls. The ambiance of the patio will be seen from the front and the side, which will have wrought iron railings and, I'm sorry, stone piers. The overhead doors that will open up the seasonal rooms will have glass panels, black trim. On the left, you see the color of the wood tone, horizontal wood siding that will be in the inset of the patio area, a black color, red trim. And farther down on the board is a sample of the buff-colored stone. The roof will be a nearly black-colored roof. That's all I have.
Oh, okay.
I ended the color black.
Anything from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Are we planning to have any new mechanical equipment on the roof? Of any kind?
What is there shall remain.
Being that this is almost 100% renovation, I would request that any mechanical equipment, old or new, be screened with some architectural screening materials.
All right. Is there anything else? Kathy?
Again, just taking advantage of both property owners being here. Just, and maybe the property owner can speak to the timeline of the land purchase agreement with the adjoining parcel, and how that's going to tie in with the two parcels, both acquiring and then submitting for the consolidation.
Are you asking about the, I'm sorry, are you asking about the additional parking that we're purchasing? So the electricians' union located right behind the property, I believe it's, is it 55 feet going back? 57 feet going back. We are purchasing behind our property, and the Funeral Home is purchasing behind their property as well, an additional 57 feet going back to add parking behind both properties, to add a whole full, I believe it's a double row. Right? Double row with a drive aisle behind it. Oh, timeframe?
David Bartulovic. The timeline is, they have meetings once a month, so it was approved. They got their letter approved, and I think the next step is getting with the city and trying to outline the land, right? New survey, site survey?
Survey.
Yep.
Consolidation.
So I'm thinking, hoping in the next 30 to 45 days. We're moving as fast as they are.
Could you spell your last name, too?
Bartulovic, B as in boy, A-R, T as in Tony, U-L-O, V as in Victor, I-C.
Thank you. Kathy, anything else?
No, we have the 11 conditions noted.
I think the building looks great. I can almost see it now. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the 11 conditions.
Second.
Well, there would be a 12th condition for the screening of any mechanical equipment.
12 conditions with screening of any mechanical items on the roof.
Have a second?
I still second that.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
We have an architectural review of an industrial building at 7405 Production Boulevard. Please come up, give us your name and address, tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Good evening. My name's Eric Spanner. The address that we're looking at is 7405 Production Boulevard. Do you want my actual street address?
No, that's good, right?
Okay. I'm here with Adam Tassif. He is the designer from Lewis Eldridge.
Yeah, and we're 13,000 Athens Avenue, Lakewood, Ohio. Please.
You spell that last name.
Yeah, it's Tassif. T as in Tom, A-S as in Sam, E as in Eric, F as in Frank, F as in Frank.
Okay, so what we're looking to do is add a sign to the front entrance of our manufacturing building here in Mennor. It would be about a 14-foot-high sign composed of aluminum panels sitting out about 16 feet from the front entrance of the building, and we're sitting back about 251 feet from the property line. So just trying to draw attention to the individuals coming to visit the building while not taking anything away from the street itself. Did I miss anything? You want to cover any?
Thank you. You know, the property, when you're pulling off that cul-de-sac, it has a left and a right drive. There's a lot of semi-trucks and traffic. There's chemicals and everything that make up the product that they're creating. So to really guide visitors down the right corridor away from any moving traffic and machines and whatnot was the goal.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
Kathy, anything from the administration?
Just to note and to clarify, I mean, the administration was recommending reviewing this as an architectural feature of the building. It's not the main wall of the building, not the main front wall of the building. And it is important to allow for visibility, but we will treat the sign separately.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, in the documents that were submitted, there's like a plan photo here.
Yep.
Where is this entrance in respect to this photo?
So it's going to be to the left of M2.
Okay.
It's going to sit right there.
So it's on that side of the building?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with four conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You, too. Informal rezone of 1.7 acres from B2 General Business to R4 Single Family Residential at 9198 Lake Shore Boulevard. Is that applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
I'm Brian Tempurio. I'm here with Tempurio Roofing. We're looking to rezone from commercial to residential, to build a home, a single-family home around 2,800 square feet.
Okay, and that's it?
About it, yeah.
Kathy, do you have anything?
Well, really, maybe just to dialogue, to discuss the, they originally brought in it as an R3 zoning. And when you look at the exhibit that's on the screen right now, they could go either way if you were in agreement with a rezone to residential. As you can see on, was that Heather Hill Drive? Those are all R3 parcels. But then to the south is the R4 zoning. So there's both zoning classifications in the area. I guess our thought was, you know, I don't know if, is the house going to sit as close to the street as it's shown there? I know this was just a quick example. Or is it going to be setback more? Would you, do you have interest in, you know, if property owners came to you and wanted to, you know, purchase to extend their lots, it would make more sense to do R3? So I guess maybe just some thoughts on what you're, is this home for you? Is this to sell, or?
We're looking to resell it.
Oh, to resell it. So would it be as close as the minimum setback there, or?
We're pretty rough in the planning stages still, but that was the engineer's suggestion.
Okay. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, and remember, we're not voting on this tonight.
Yeah, just interested. So 2,800 square feet and almost a two-acre lot. Just unusual for Mennor. Do you think you'd, it seems a little bit of a wasted land to me. I don't know if there was something else, if you were, if you could talk on that, if you would be willing to sell to maybe
I don't know if there was something else, if you were, if you could talk on that, if you, if you would be willing to sell to maybe the other landowners on Heather Hill there, or something like that?
Absolutely, yeah. We're willing to sell.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know if there was a specific need of say, hey, this is, you had somebody in mind that was going to purchase this and say they really wanted that much acreage? It just seems kind of large, but?
We were actually looking to build two homes, but the lot size, the-
Wouldn't allow it?
Wouldn't allow it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
With that in mind, the, the size of the lot, would, if, if the city has mentioned here, the administration has concerns about the rezoning of this parcel B, if we're not going to be using, or the intention isn't to use the full acreage for this home with the R3 zoning, is that, would there still be enough to parcel off that B if this, where the commercial building is, if they wanted to purchase that and expand westward? Would that allow that?
Not if they rezoned it, I mean, so, yeah, I guess that would be something to consider, you know, for the, you know, do they need the whole piece?
Basically split.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Because otherwise, right now, if you aren't selling to Heather Hill residents to go back, this back of the parcel B becomes sort of landlocked, if you will.
Yes.
Right. So, it makes sense, I guess there's two options, you could sell it to the, expand the Heather Hill or parcel off a little bit, so there's still possibility of this rezone for this B2. That was just my-
Yeah.
Question, thank you.
You might just get somebody that wants a big yard, though, too.
We've, we've had it for sale for 10 years and nobody's-
Okay.
Nobody's wanted it.
Oh, wow.
All right, is there anything else?
I have a question for Kathy. Typically, between commercial and residential, there's a buffer required. If this goes residential, do we create a non-conforming situation with the, with the, the B2 zoning? The closeness of the building to the property line?
Maybe, maybe our law director can answer that question.
It, it may be non-conforming at that point, but again, that's a, it's a law, it's a lawful, non-conforming condition.
It's pre-existing.
Absolutely, so if, I forgot what it's named, Black Brook Plaza or something like that. If that were ever redeveloped, obviously, it would have to comply with current regulations at that time, but but that's, that, that's true along its, its eastern edge as well and, and the southern portion of the lot. I mean, it's, it's surrounded by residential zoning, so
Yes.
Now, the probability of that being redeveloped or expanded in any, in any, probably fairly remote, but who knows?
The only reason I was thinking about is if this land changes zoning or reconfigurations, you know, this might come into play, you know? If, if part of it is zoned one thing and part of it's zoned another thing. And you don't have any intentions, at least at the moment, um, no, you don't have any intentions to subdivide this and build something else on the, on the rest of the land?
No intentions, no.
So, this rez, this rezoning could be, a condition could be that you don't, you don't, well, you might want to subdivide it with more residential subdivisions. But that's it, you're not intending to do anything else with the land?
No, we would consider selling it to the Heather.
I understand, okay.
But that's it.
That's all.
Is there anything else? All right, thanks. Oh, real quick, Kathy, could you walk through the process for the applicant and for everybody? This is not a referendum over, this one.
No, the charter outlines when, when a rezone is subject to referendum and to go to the voters of the city, and this is a business district classification, and changing it to a residential classification does not warrant a referendum requirement.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a building addition, site alteration, Ken Ganley Kia at 9090 Mener Avenue. And I don't see McKenzie, so. Please give us your name and address and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Emily Scheffler from Bocon, 3142 Prospect Avenue, East Cleveland, Ohio, 44122. And this is Paul Circo next to me as well.
Could you spell his, could you spell your name?
Spell my name, or my last name, S C H E F F L E R.
Mr. Circo's name is on the application.
Okay.
For this project, as highlighted on the screen right now, is that, yeah. This project is a renovation of an addition of three, I should really say, two additions onto the building. In the back of the building, we're adding on a service bay, several service bays, as well as an addition of a car wash right adjacent to the back. And then to the bottom, the south of your screen, you're seeing a new vehicle delivery zone for Ken Ganley Kia. As part of this renovation, you'll also see in the front of the building, along Mener Ave, that we are increasing the customer parking for a great relationship between the front of the building and the customer walking in. On top of that, we are removing part of the grassy area in the front of the building, along Mener Ave, to include vehicle display. Right now, we are showing it in alignment with the other vehicle display that's further south, maintaining it as it needs to be along the right-of-way. Part of this renovation, and the mo, the main point of it, is giving this building a facelift, if one may call it that, making sure that everything is consistent. As you can see on the exterior of this building, you have black metal panel along the top with Kia's new branding and direction that they are going nationwide, as well as Coventry Gray Ephes material, as well as metal panel. The metal panel that is going to be an aluminum gray is at those pillars, right next to the curtain wall. And then the Ephes surrounds the rest of the building. Any face of the building that currently has brick or CMU is going to be painted with an exterior grade paint, as well as having a new trim applied to match the gray metal pa, the black metal panel that you see on the fronts and the side of the building. Overall, this building has gone through several different zonings, as you probably saw, from a restaurant to a dealership, to then a bigger dealership, and so on and so forth, so we're dealing with some conditions of a step change of 1 foot 6 in the building, and trying to make it seem like a large cohesive unit from the street, as well as making it very pleasing for the eye for the passerby. Right now, the mechanical units are concealed by the existing parapets, and we're actually raising the parapet slightly just to create that consistency across the two sides. So, now, it's a little bit higher, but our mechanical units are not visible from the exterior. In terms of building signage, Kia's logo is just located in the exact, almost the exact same locations that you would see today when passing down the street. Trying to see if there's any other major conditions we wanted to talk about. Existing conditions nearby, you'll see low-story buildings, we're not adding anything in height. If anything, the heights are staying the same, we're just adding on these additions on either side. As part of the overall site, we are going to repave the entire lot and put down new striping to accommodate the clearances that are needed going around the building in consideration for these additions. As part of the new vehicle displays, while we know that we are removing two, three light poles, and they will be considerations moving forward of where to replace them and if needed, where needed, and we will be coming back for signage in the future.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We have eight conditions noted, she's pretty well addressed all of them.
Do you have anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Just clarification on the, on the coloration of the, of the re-imaging of the building. There's a page 12 that shows the, it's the main entrance rendering. It shows the, the black, and I don't think there's any, but, but the, the panels below that look almost white. And then on the elevations, they, they look quite gray.
So-
So, which is it?
It is, I do have actually a sample of what the gray looks like.
And I know how hard it is to get copies to look the way you want it to look, but I'm just, I mean, this, the white and the black look more interesting than the, kind of a grayish color in the black.
Yeah, so for the renderings, the renderings, it's a very light gray swatch, you'll actually see the panel right here. And as you know, looking at a panel in, inside versus outside has a different effect. It will be a little bit darker, it must be the, I would say on page 11, if you go to page 11 real quick and look at that lower swatch, that is kind of the idea of what this gray panel would look like, a little bit more in shadow. So, we had rendered these in perspective of the sun in that time of day.
So, even, even those two don't quite look the same, I, I-
It would be a little bit, I would say, given the imagery, I would say it's a little bit of a gray that's showing on the screen right now.
Oh, you're hitting the mic. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought a cat got caught.
Could you switch to the slide that has the materials on it kind of laid out? It's, hold on. Nine, if you go up, it's in the packet, it would be page nine of the packet.
Yeah, that's gray. It's gray.
On page nine of the packet there to the left of your screen, you're going to see that Ephes, that flat, smooth Ephes picture, and then, right adjacent to it is this lighter gray color. In the sun, it does kind of wash out to feel a little bit brighter, but it is very much a neutral tone.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Is, is the new vehicle display area along Mener Avenue going to be elevated or at street level?
It's going to be at street level.
Nothing else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hadd?
I have a question, on, on page eight, you show a proposed second floor, is that just a remodeling of the second floor that's existing, then?
Everything is existing, this building is quite candidly a hodgepodge.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to ask Ms. Scheffler if, normally what we like to see on, let's call it new buildings especially, is some sort of landscaping at the base of the building. And on page 14 of the rendering, next to the delivery area, there's a very large acreage of, of lands, or excuse me, of asphalt. It almost looks like where this car is sitting in this rendering here, at the Ephes, that that might be able to be moved back slightly to even create whatever you can get. I know that probably turning radiuses and things like that, but that spot looks like a perfect example of what you might be able to get some landscaping there, because the rest of the building is devoid of that, other than your new bed up front. If, if that's possible, you can see it here, but again, it might be, you know, I don't know if trucks come in there and turn.
So, right now, the spot that you're seeing in that rendering is actually the existing southern portion of the plot that's seen in that, basically to the left of the screen here, where you see those trees planted. Right now, if you, could you pan a little bit to the left? Yeah, and down, so right now, there's a series of trees kind of planted in a row along there, and they do have existing landscaping throughout their property. So, as part of the renovation, we could suggest putting more landscaping in it while we're retro renovating the parcel, the part further up as well.
Right, I'm, I'm actually talking right next to, or against the building.
Oh, I see, I see, thank you for the clarification.
On page 14, there was a, there's a car parked there.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so, the landscaping up front, that would be great to augment that if possible, but really, right there at the base of the building, it almost looks like there's so much asphalt that that parking, it looks like there's four or five spots right there against the building that maybe that can be moved back slightly to add some sort of landscape at the base of the building.
Understood, yeah, we can take a look at that to see if that does accommodate it at this time. It seems like very much a possibility, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I, I, in the literature, in the conversation, you talk about painting brick. I always kind of do this when I, have you looked at staining the brick rather than painting it? The reason I say that is that once you paint brick, you seal it, and then you have problems-
Removing the-
Not anticipated, well, and the moisture doesn't get out, and then it starts doing things that you weren't anticipating. Have you considered staining the brick?
Did you want to say anything to that?
Well, brick is actually in the front of the building, we will be covering that with Ephes, so stucco material. And the portion of the masonry that is being actually painted, it's going to be concrete block in the back of the building, which is painted already.
Oh, okay, well, that kind of answers that question, then. Thank you.
Thank you, is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the eight conditions.
Second.
Can I hold up for a second, I have one other question. Any of the additions, are there any mechanical equipment on the roofs of those additions?
Yes, there will be mechanical equipment on, on the shop expansion, basically, yes.
And can that be enclosed in an architectural screening material?
The plan is to match the parapet height of the existing building, where we already have units, and those are being screened by the parapet walls.
So, the parapet will be adequate to screen the new?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you, sorry.
And I think we're actually nine conditions. And the ninth condition being what Mr. Perkovich talked about, the landscaping-
Landscaping bed.
Yeah, landscaping bed. I don't know what, what you want to call that.
Might be specific as to the wall, so that we have that for the record?
Yeah, I think that would be the northeast face of the building next to the delivery addition.
So, let's try this again, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with nine conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, anything?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Show move.